Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call to order the meeting of the Urbana City Council. This is a special meeting to consider council and mayor priorities. Will the clerk please call the roll?
City Council members, Emmons.
Here.
Brown.
Here.
Hazen. Jacobson.
Here.
Miller.
Here.
Roberts.
Here.
Wu.
Here.
And Mayor Marlin.
Here.
Next item on the agenda is public input. I have one card from the public. Does anyone else wish to address the Urbana City Council? Okay. Audrey Ishi.
Okay, I'm Audrey Ishi from Urbana, Illinois. Is that good enough? Okay. And I'm here to talk about Vision Zero with respect to the council goals and priorities. I think this is a fantastic framework that you should be aware of, that many, many of the goals fit into and could also represent a relatively easy win situation for the city. Let's see. Okay, so Vision Zero is a network. It's a movement that started in Sweden and has spread throughout Europe and is now spreading throughout the United States, as we'll see in one second, in which the philosophy is that there are no acceptable fatalities in traffic, neither pedestrian, cyclist, nor car vehicle fatalities. We already have seen Vision Zero in action in the airline industry. We do not accept any fatalities in the airline industry. In fact, I think the U.S. had zero last year in the commercial airline industry. When there's an accident, we don't say, "Oh, we put that drunk pilot into jail. Now the problem solved," which is what we see happening all the time with traffic accidents, even in our city. Response and design then focuses on that entire system, and it's the responsibility of all parts of the system to ensure zero fatalities. The context of cities is wonderful for Vision Zero as opposed to waiting for the state or the federal government. Zero is achievable at the local level. It's something we all get behind, and it has incredible tie-ins to equity, social justice, economics, business friendliness, tourism, and so on. It's also adaptable to the individual cities, as those logos showed you. Each city has its own logo within the Vision Zero framework. As of last year, these cities had adopted Vision Zero. As you can see, it's mainly on the coasts, but Chicago is a Vision Zero city, and interestingly, Columbia, Missouri, which formed their own task force and their plan without, actually without consultants. They did it in-house, formed a task force and determined the strategy and gathered the statistics and so on. Houston has dropped out, but some of the other ones, Minneapolis is now Vision Zero, Boulder is Vision Zero, Ann Arbor, I'm not sure. But with respect to Urbana and the goals, with Vision Zero implemented, we will find in Urbana that people, one of the main things, which I'll get to in just a moment, is that drivers have to slow down where accidents are occurring, those corridors that are listed as high fatality corridors. When travelers are going slower, they're going to see our gardens, our parks, our shopping opportunities. Right now, you can zoom by five points and have no idea what's behind the Walgreens, have no idea what's all along University Avenue, not to mention that University Avenue represents a very specific dangerous boundary between the north and southern parts of Urbana. Zero will stand out, and Urbana will be a leader in the quality of life for Illinois. What's particularly upsetting for us in Urbana, especially in the last 10 years, that we've had a bicycle and pedestrian advisory committee, is that traffic deaths have gone up in the last 10 years. We've had, we've more than doubled the rate over the previous 10 years. Okay, it's not a lot in absolute numbers, but recall, Vision Zero means not a single fatality is acceptable. And also, the rate of pedestrians, the vulnerable road users, is very high compared to the national rate of 18 percent. In Urbana, 56 percent of these fatalities are cyclists and pedestrians. So we are moving in the wrong direction. And I think that with the Vision Zero network and framework, we can look at why that is. Just mentioning that Vision Zero is accepted by lots of national agencies. One of the, one of the now analytical frameworks for Vision Zero is checking where is that death and serious injury. It's concentrated on certain dangerous corridors. I think we all know where those are in Urbana. San Francisco, as you can see, 12 percent of the streets have 70 percent of the crashes, 5 percent have 50 percent. In Denver, Los Angeles, 6 percent have 65 percent. I think we would find something similar, if not more extreme, in Urbana. These accident, these fatal and serious injuries are disproportionately concentrated in vulnerable communities with low income, with seniors, with people with disabilities, perhaps our own hospital district, residents with limited English proficiency, interestingly. This graphic, which I'm sure you've all seen, is simply showing you how much that speed kills, that you have a nine out of 10 chance of surviving if you're hit at 20 miles per hour. It drops rapidly by 40 miles per hour, which is between 30, 35 being between 30 and 40. You can see, one may survive out of 10 hit. So the enforcement framework of Vision Zero is to focus on those places and those things that kill, including just these violations. Not a signal light that's out or something, but speeding, pedestrian right-of-way, running red lights, running stop signs, and failing to yield while turning. The effort to enforce can be targeted beforehand where those are going to occur. And finally, Vision Zero in Urbana is already in our bike master plan. We've already committed, by having approved the bike master plan, and it's going to be in the pedestrian master plan as well, that we want to be a Vision Zero city. So to be a Vision Zero city, you have to make a clear goal that you will eliminate traffic fatalities and severe injuries. The mayor has to publicly, officially commit to Vision Zero. The strategy or framework is in place, and then you involve police, transportation, and public health, as well as, as we know already, we have a strong commitment from planning and transportation. Thank you.
Thank you. Bill?
Just a quick question. You know, we went through this process recently for the redesign or the redoing of University Avenue. The state's mostly responsible for that, but we went through a year or so of planning, and that's pretty far along. How would that have looked different if we had had the Vision Zero framework in place?
Well, as you know, the state is focused on safety for University Avenue, but I don't know that the analysis was done beforehand to say, for example, what speed, what speed is in place on University Avenue in the intersections where the accidents have occurred. There have been numerous deaths on University Avenue, as you know. I really, I don't know, I can't say beyond that what I think would have been looked at. I know that they're interested mainly in safety there, making sure that it's, and making sure that it is more pedestrian-friendly than it is right now. Another concern is just that they didn't take into consideration the changing land use up there with high-density residential areas being developed, resulting in far more crossings than they may have counted so far.
Okay, thanks. And do you know if there's any Vision Zero states?
No, it's more of a city. It's a city plan, as it mentioned. It's something that you envision for your city.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Eric?
Are there, are there statistics, you showed some statistics for Urbana, are there statistics for the time course of changes in fatalities and serious injuries in the cities that have adopted Vision Zero?
Yes, there are. I didn't have time to present those here, but New York and San Francisco, for example, have seen big drops in their fatalities under this framework, where they focus the efforts specifically on the high-density corridors and the actions that result in, in serious injury and death. There's a Vision Zero seminar that the city clerk has that was put on just a week ago with some of those statistics.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we move on to the second phase of our priority setting. Bill Cridonier with the Oslin Group. So he has a short recap via PowerPoint, and then he'll lead the discussion. And again, just to note, the list that was, the priority list that was emailed out today is, has just been replaced by an updated list, so make sure you have the latest one. Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you all for making time again this evening. We have about 65 minutes in order to accomplish what I will hope will be three to five priorities that you will place on top of the priorities that are already in existence within your budgeting process and the other administrative processes within the city of Urbana. Last time, as you recall, it was just a brainstorming, sort of a brain dump of what priorities could be. This evening, what I'd like us to do is go through that prioritization, have you provide your observations and discuss it a bit, look at what you, the initial priorities that were determined, and then move toward an area of agreement that you all will feel comfortable with. And then finally, talk about what this means, what are the next steps. So as we talked about before, your role is the same as it was last time, so no need to go through that, other than just a quick little reminder. Mine is the same as well. Yours is content, mine is process. If you ask a content question and I'm, and I don't have an answer, or even if I think I might have an answer, I'll redirect to you. As before, if I'm off track, I ask that you let me know if you're off track, or I feel I can summarize and move us along, I ask permission to do so. Same understandings as before, as we had before, silent, phones on silent or vibrate, side conversations kept at a minimum, and really keep statements concise, as well as focus on the topic at hand or work toward a common understanding. So today, I'm sorry, I'm going to run through this because I'd like to get to the content quickly. As I said, I'd like to, like to have us focus on three to five goals in, based on what you put together last time, which was right about 29 or 30. And so I'm just going to fly here. And this was the statement we used the last time. "In addition to maintaining core municipal functions such as public infrastructure, public safety, neighborhood services, and economic development, this evening, we'd like to develop a zoning agreement on council member and mayor citywide priorities for the coming three Clear to everybody? One of the great things that we accomplished this, I think, that happened between February 5th and 19th is we had 100 percent participation. That's pretty rare, believe it or not, to get that amount of participation. And I was, I was somewhat concerned when the recommendation was, and I think it was Dennis said, "Hey, can we just provide our responses?" I was concerned that we might not get the responses, but we did, and I appreciate that. It maybe took a little longer, but that's fine. That's fine. So the process that we went through is you sent your responses to me, I tallied them, and there were comments that were provided with some of these, okay? And with those comments, I would like to provide you an opportunity this evening to provide those, you know, those observations, and then discuss it as a council, rather than me responding back to those as, as, again, the process person. So what I'd like that to be as part of the process this evening. And so then what I did is we did the tally, and then I just asked the Excel sheet to, so your number one priority was given five points, your number two, four points, number three, three points, number four priority was given two points, and number five priority was given one point, okay? So the highest number of points translates into the highest priority based on the council input. And by the way, it's not fair to pass chocolate around in front of me.[872.63][872.63][laughter] It's one of my weak, no, you wouldn't want to see these teeth that way. Okay, thanks. Thanks, Jared. So then what I did is I just put the, put the priorities together, we printed those out, and I distributed them to you. When I got here this evening, I learned I had translated one of errands improperly, actually, two of errands improperly, and we moved them around, so it did change the top three priorities, okay? So you, what I sent you yesterday is not what you have on your desk today. So before we, before we move along any further, any observations, any questions, any concerns that you would like to raise as, as an individual council member or as a council? Bill?
I guess the general question, will we, will we have an opportunity to try to combine some of these or rephrase them in order to incorporate some of the ones farther down on the list? Like, some of them may fit in a general category that we, that could be sub-goals.
If, I would say if the council is comfortable, and this, this is what Dennis sort of brought up in one of the very first comments the last time, was if we have a larger category, you might have two or three sub-goals. If the council is comfortable that what fits into that overall general goal is accomplishable, is able to be accomplished in the two- to three-year timeframe that you have, then I would say yes. If it, if it says, you know, it's this plus this plus this plus this plus this, and you've got two other priorities, and it looks like it's really pushing the edge of the envelope in, in order to be accomplished, I would recommend that you back away from doing that. Is that a fair response?
Yeah, is this a good time to suggest one, or do you want to wait on that?
Let's hold, if you don't mind. Yes.
Just so we're all on the same page, can you confirm the top three priorities as you believe they are at this point?
As I believe they are at this point in time.
Yes.
Top priority is planning for Lincoln Square site transformation into a destination. We're not saying transform Lincoln Square site, we're saying plan for that, correct?
Correct.
That's number one. Number two, seek to increase minority participation in city procurement, hiring, and contracting. Three, work toward equity and traffic stops. Now, it also says add a Golden Corral. One respondent crossed that piece off.
Thank you.
Okay? So I have, I mean, that was, again, one of the comments, and that may come up in observations, was they probably felt stronger about the equity and traffic stops in the Golden Corral. That's just, so, but I didn't, I didn't mark that piece out. So those would be the top three. Other observations?
So what we're seeing on the screen is not correct.
Yes, it's not correct.[1063.13][1063.13][laughter] Now, I'm really, I'm really just talking about process here, what you see in, in your hand in front of you. That's right, you guys have all these screens, too.
Mm-hmm.
That means the next one won't be correct either. So, other observations? That was a good clarification. Thank you, Jared. Is there anybody, I have a couple extra sheets here, if there's anybody that would like, I, I need to keep one. Oh, did you get them? Oh, thank you. Thanks, Charlie, for doing that. Because it is different, I can, I can't work off of the screen any longer. Dennis?
All right, so obviously, picking three, some being very particular and some being rather broad, some of them having, are being nice goals, but ones which we, as a city, may not actually be able to affect because of multiple issues like property ownership, community compliance, or whatever. How are we going to really determine what we think we wish to accomplish? Because there's a lot of things we should be working on in this list. We're not going to maybe, maybe some of them we'll accomplish much easier than the ones that we're being limited to say that we're going to fund and put our attention on. I think that bothers me a little bit.
Okay. A response from council members to that? What I would recommend, with, with that in mind, and also with what Bill said in mind, I'd recommend, rather than say, "Let's look at all three, let's take, let's take one at a time," and say, "Is this, does this incorporate everything we should, we believe it should incorporate?" And then, Bill, I'm trying to air to what you said here. And then Dennis, as we work down, if you feel that something is, is a gross oversight that should be a focus, I would ask that that be brought to the attention of the council, and then the council speak about it or respond to it. Is that a fair way to go about this with, with folks here? Is that agreeable? Oh, go ahead, Jared.
I think what Dennis is asking, if I may rephrase it, Dennis, in another way, is what is our ability here to reorganize as we see fit, based on how these things are set as they are currently? I think Dennis doesn't agree with the ranking as, as it stands. Does that, does that sound correct, Dennis?
Well, I'd feel like we're too short-sighted to pick three, that there are doable goals on this list, if we put our attention on, we could probably achieve fairly easily. I don't know. I mean, I guess that's what we're discussing.
So is your, is your argument then to have flexibility to?
Yes, it is.
Be able to move something to a higher standard?
And I, and I like the idea of combining, because, well, you know, talking about connectivity, rail trail pathways, you know, those could be combined into, because they're conceptually dealing with, with the transportation connectivity, you know, in different directions and ways. And I think working on all of them, achieve the goal that we want to have, which would be greater connectivity throughout the community.
I'm going to turn that to the council then for discussion.
So my initial thought is, obviously, we don't want to rehash the entire thing. That's why we ranked everything and did it in the first place. But I like the idea of doing, doing so with our rankings under the presumption of combining ideas, as Bill suggested. If there are multiple themes that we can pull together into a, a single larger thing to focus on, I would be agreeable to seeing that in any, any of those. Is, is top three the goal, Dan? I thought we were top five.
It was three to five. Five's probably more realistic.
Yeah. My hope was, is that we would be able to say, "Okay, these top three, absolutely yes." And then let's look at two more. Let's see what the, what, variety's not the right word. Looking across those top three priorities, what's not being covered that we think is critical for the city to focus on in the next?
And one of the reasons for this rather focused approach this time is in the context of our financial environment, which is the next, next five years, we're going to be looking at reducing our budget. So we really have to be intentional about what we want to focus on and identifying what we want to accomplish and, in the context of having the resources available and the staff available to do it. So all 30 of these things are, you know, almost all of them, I guess, are very worthy goals or priorities, but realistically, we're going to have to be very, pretty selective about what we want to do. So we have to think about what, what do we want to do the next two to three years? And this is in addition to, of course, maintaining excellence in all our core functions, so we have to be realistic about this.
Eric?
I guess the only other thing I would say is that as much as these goals are competitive with each other, we also, I think I'm saying something with different words, we also ought to look at synergies between the goals.
Thank you.
Where, where can two or three goals work together in a way that we would desire?
And if I, if I may, the, the public comment is something that could be placed in the thought process with any, and I believe that's what, that's what you were saying, is that's, it doesn't, because you don't, you're not going to say the zero is the top priority for city of Urbana, that doesn't mean that that element doesn't play into it. Just as, one of my concerns is if you say expand connectivity of rail trail, I think that's what you, you talked about, Dennis, with the focus between Vine and Lincoln. If you went down through that list and said, "Where is everything that has a potential impact?" The art and, and there are five other items that fall into it, and I don't know if it's five or just two, you might not be able to provide enough focus to that overall priority. That's, that's the concern that I would have, but you all would know that better than I, right? And so if you all say to me, or if you all say to each other this evening, "Yes, we believe this can be accomplished," then, then I think you're, you're the ones that are living it from day to day. So if I, if it, if it's helpful, and I like, actually, I like the, I like this dialogue. I think it's helpful to sort of set the guidelines as we move forward with this. What I'm thinking is if it's helpful is we can look at item, the, the top priority, which is plan for Lincoln Square site transformation. And if we say, "Yes," that, that is clearly one, should be, clearly be one of our FOCI as we go forward, then we've responded to that one, and then we have four to five more we can be thinking about, or three to four more, excuse me, three to four, if we're going to do a total of five. Is that fair? Appropriate? Maybe appropriate's a better word. Dennis? I thought, I thought you were reaching for your microphone.
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay.
And I, and I can see combining it with, like, well, if we talk about goal 10, which was the top one, now planning for Lincoln Square site transformation, I could imagine including number four, being more welcoming to businesses. I could see how those two would combine in synergy.
Counsel?
I would certainly agree with that. I think that be more welcoming to businesses is probably one of the broader pieces that we have on there, and it's got eight points, or five points, so.
We are, we are being.
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking.[1602.33][1602.33][laughter] So, plan for Lincoln Square site and Philo Business, all those things tie together, so there's some things that will just fall off the list. And so I like the idea of taking the top, you know, especially those top, it looks like five, basically, you know, if you're going to say 10 is on the list, then nine, there's not much difference between 10 and nine. And then discuss the feasibility of those, and I think then you start to see what else is available, or what else we could tie into those, right? But I don't know, it just seems like we have to have an economic conversation about each one of those if we're talking about budget cuts and things of that nature.
And I'm, I see that I did not change the ranking number when I, when I moved that for you, when I moved that, Aaron, so you'll have to be able to count a little bit. So I'm going to turn to the council and say to you, if your top priority is plan for Lincoln Square, and you feel that that incorporates being more business-friendly in the context of what you were thinking on February 5th, in my mind, being more business-friendly extends throughout the city, but if you were thinking more in, we're being, this is where we want to be business-friendly, then that makes sense to me. But again, I'm, I'm the outsider here. Yes, Mary Ellis?
So 10, 14, and four seem to go together, make Southeast Urbana an economic priority, and I, and I think that being absolutely, that we want to be more friendly to businesses in general, but at least based on the rankings here, it could start with a focus on Lincoln Square in Southeast Urbana.
I'm, I'm looking to the, a suggestion is 10, 14, and four be a single priority, correct? And I'm looking at the council to see if there is agreement.
I would also add 21s that with greater incentives to small business owners. I think those all, those all kind of run under the same theme.
And I'm going to ask you, and I, I'm coming at this again somewhat blind, but as I think about it, this is a priority for the next two to three years. And if you, you feel that these four elements all play in together, and they, there's a synergy, someone used the word synergy, with these, then I think as a council, you've made a decision. If you say it's going to be too much, oh, go ahead, Dennis.
Yeah, okay. I think that, I mean, I understand how important it is to develop all parts of the city, but in the sense of what's happening in the sense of what's happening at Lincoln Square, it's a very downtown-centered issue. It's not the same as Southeast Urbana. So I don't want to, I don't want to say we shouldn't work on Southeast Urbana, but I think the more that we can bring together a concise vision for what the downtown should be, which of course, Lincoln Square is a very large part, but it also, the downtown includes Main Street. So, I mean, I would say that, you know, number three is an important thing as well. Promote Urbana as a destination with the greater Urbana-Champaign-Urbana City community. I mean, that is also synergistic with the point of why we are trying to bring Lincoln Square becoming a destination as well. So, I mean, I think that's, it's part of the philosophy of the city is to transform not just Lincoln Square. Lincoln Square is probably a really excellent issue to deal with, but we're really talking about the greater downtown, which is only like a block and a half away from Lincoln Square. So, I mean, I just, I think that a lot of the activities that we try to achieve, the transformation of how people think about Lincoln Square, is also needs to be discussed about, we're just generally, the transformation and the goals of the transformation for the downtown in general, because most people, when they come to a city, are not going to want to go to Lincoln Square, they want to go to the downtown. They want to see, well, what's downtown? What's the center of town look like? Okay? These things are next to each other. They correlate very strongly, in my mind.
Bill.
I guess I think of being more welcoming to businesses and the other one, I don't see it, incentives to small business are more like implementation steps, and the main goals is Southeast Urbana and Lincoln Square. And I don't know if it makes sense to combine those or not. It seems like they take kind of different strategies as far as developing goes, but I think both of those, welcoming to businesses and more incentives for small business, should be, I think of it as implementation steps, although, you know, you're talking about TIF and non-TIF, so there's some difference there, too.
Jared.
Bill, I guess the way that I would say that I think about, I think about that is that if we don't include both, and we only include one or the other, then the other gets left out. And when I think about, you know, if we're making that a goal, if we're making it a priority, then it says to me, you know, if those are our two overarching focal points, then, you know, depending on how the council, how the mayor sees fit, you know, it's like a 50-50, it's a 60-40, for that amount of time, you know, as the mayor directs staff says, hey, you're going to spend 60% of your time focused on this one and 40% of your time on this one, or 50% of your time on this and 50% of your time on that. Whereas if one drops out, even though there are different focuses and strategies, then the other just loses its priority status and falls down to the list. What do you think?
Yeah, I mean, they're both in the top five, I think, still. I'd support them both. I don't know if you could combine them to say, you know, set economic priorities as Lincoln Square and Southeast Urbana, Philo Road Business District or something, but I guess they're both kind of economic development targets. But I think the others are more like implementation steps, but, you know, would be part of the plan, part of the goals.
Would it be helpful for you to think about, as we're planning for Lincoln's, the Lincoln Square Site to be a destination, these are elements that we need to consider? I mean, I'm working off of what you're talking about, Dennis. And so then, as we're looking at 14 and four, is making Southeast Urbana an economic priority, does that fall into planning Lincoln Square? It doesn't seem to, to me.
No.
It doesn't mean it's not a priority, it's not one of your other five priorities, but it seems that that's different. And so if 14 is different, then, and then we've got four, I think four does fall into that, but four can fall into any of those. I mean, even if it's Southeast Urbana being another priority, four would then, again, fall into that, right? I mean, you're not going to design something without considering being more welcoming to businesses. I just don't see you all doing that. But if you, I mean, I think it's fine to include it, you may want to include it again on the next, you know, if you do Southeast Urbana. And then three and 21, promote Urbana as a destination. I think that absolutely will be happening when you're planning for the Lincoln Square Site. You wouldn't consider that. Aaron.
So I think when we did this, I know when we did this, we started to get into a lot of lofty ideas and goals. And so I think it's inherent within Plan for Lincoln Square and make Southeast Urbana an economic priority, the Philo Road Business District, inherent within those two things is be more welcoming to businesses and anything in relationship to that.
Agreed.
I like for us to just take them off the paper, so we don't have to keep.
Going back to them.
Going back to them, right? You know, it just doesn't, I mean, it's inherent. I think we are all, we have a consensus here that we're going to be more welcoming and more have a priority to.
Business friendly.
To grow business, yes. I think that's.
Other input from the council? I mean, I saw you shaking your head, Mary.
No, 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 I agree. I mean, and I like what Bill was saying in terms of implementation. I'm looking, I'm just writing down words. One is where, right? One is implementation, one is impact. Those are the three words that I kind of came up, or I'm sure you can use different words. But I think that economic development is the broad picture here. Where do we want to focus our attention? I think there is a question in terms of, can we focus our attention both on Lincoln Square and on Southeast Urbana? But certainly in terms of being welcoming to businesses and promoting greater incentives, that's all in the implementation of that economic development.
Okay.
So the larger question to me is whether or not Lincoln Square and downtown are merged. That's the larger question to me.
So let's take that one first, because you also mentioned Southeast Urbana as a where possibility, right? So that would be number two. But is it, I mean, is it realistic to merge the Lincoln Square discussion with the downtown Urbana discussion, or priority, excuse me, priority? What's that?
So how can you not?
How can you not?
Yeah, yes, I would also merge those, but separate them from Southeast.
Okay. I've heard from all but one. That's, I haven't heard, yes, or are you comfortable with that? We have six, which is a zone of agreement in my brain, but I want to make sure that I don't ignore anybody.
So we were talking about the downtown piece, is what we're talking about?
What's being suggested is, priority one, focus on Lincoln Square and downtown. I think you should keep Lincoln Square as a piece of that, because you've talked about that 15-square block or whatever it is area, along with the downtown as a priority. The question is, again, you've got two to three years, are you able to provide that focus that broadly?
Yeah, so for me, I don't want us to get bogged down in things like downtown, Lincoln Square, the whole objective of developing Lincoln Square is to make it more of an attraction for downtown. I think that's inherent within this, right? So I don't, you know, I think, you know, Dennis is correct in a sense that that is more of a downtown focus, so that's just inherent within it. I think that some of these things we could just blend, just because it is a part of that discussion by itself, all by itself. So, yeah, downtown is Lincoln Square, absolutely.
I'm seeing three nods. Dennis?
And my vision of the downtown is somewhat larger than just Lincoln Square, because we have all this potential developing property along North Broadway, you know, which includes, you know, the newly opened Broadway Market, and there are other opportunities in certain buildings along there that could easily be part of the transformation into a destination, which, of course, we want to, you know, Lincoln Square is the largest question in the hotel, you know, and it would be wonderful to come up with a solution to that in these next three years, but without sacrificing what might happen, you know, two or two blocks away, as far as where we put our attention.
Diane.
These aren't exclusive. There's a whole lot of things that will go on in addition to the three to five priorities that the council comes up with tonight. These are, you know, it's a statement from the council that this is important for the next few years, for the city to focus on this. But there's a whole lot of other economic development activity that is ongoing and that will go on, in addition to what's on this list.
Right.
And it has been going on. You know, a lot of it is in process. So, you know, I think it's important to not see this as an exclusive. If it's not on the list, it's not going to get done, because there's a whole lot that's going to get done in addition to what's on the list.
So it's not, we're not abandoning other developmental possibilities?
Oh, absolutely not.
I guess. It was my understanding, this was on top of, yeah, in addition to maintaining core municipal functions such as public?
Economic development.
And economic development is part of that core function that you all view. So that's, my concern is that we not make it so big that there are 15 pieces within one, and then you sort of lose focus in one sense.
But this is a statement to the community is, hey, this is what we think is important. This is really going to make a difference, you know, in the next few years, we can really move forward.
So what are you advocating for?
I'm advocating for focusing, I guess.
And when you say that, when you advocate for focus, you're suggesting, and I'm going to put words in your mouth.
Well, since this was my priority, I, yes.
I'd forgotten who that was, okay.
I'll own it, I'll own it. You know, I really want to focus on planning for Lincoln Square and transforming that site. And again, it is not excluding other things.
And maybe that's even important as the introductory statement, many of these priorities will require partnerships and collaborations and not be exclusive of other city priorities, existing city priorities. Yes?
So I do think one of the things that Dennis is speaking to, and I would say, is that as we prioritize, we also have to see how that fits into the budget.
Mm-hmm.
And so when we speak of the Lincoln Square Site transformation, I think it may be causing some pause for people to think, well, what level of commitment does the city have financially to that? And how would that impact Philo Road Business District or some of the other broader initiatives that Dennis may be speaking to? So maybe that might be it, if we could just maybe put a pin in that and say that that's something that we have to revisit in a broader discussion.
Well, here I can, I don't want to do all the talking, but I can address that. You know, we're starting it this year, it's beginning in the next month or so, very low budget, most of the planning is done internally. And what we're discovering already is that there's, we've already established connections with the university, we're going to be getting help from university classes, we've got a downtown business who's going to do a lot of, volunteered to do a lot of things to help with the planning. So we are kind of marshaling community resources to go toward this so that, yeah, there's a small budget impact, but it's not meaning everything else is going to grind to a halt. We can't operate like that. So that gets to the collaborations and connections with the university as well, so.
And I think what we established, from what Aaron was saying, is these things aren't, I mean, if we're going to be business friendly, we will be involving citizens, you know, you talked about involving businesses and being business friendly, university connections, those will be happening, it doesn't mean that those are falling off the list. But they may not be happening with other priorities, right? I mean, it's just going to be a selection. And Dennis, are we still, are we responding, or is the council responding to that?
Yeah, yeah. Right, I think some of my concerns have been answered. I'm totally willing to say that goal number 10 should be the top of the list, we've already placed it there.
Okay.
And I'm just thinking that, understanding the mayor's, like, larger statements about, you know, continuing to work with the wider scope as well as the specific scope, but choosing Lincoln Square to be a site with a lot of attention works for me, and I'm happy with it. So I'm willing to go with number 10 as being top priority.
Okay. Forty minutes, yeah, yeah. Well, no, typically, working through the first couple is the most difficult, and then it, because you're establishing your own guidelines and your dialogue here, and that's why I always say, go slow so we can go fast. Didn't quite work the last time, but we got close. So we're comfortable with 10 being the top priority. And then let's look at what we came up with as number two. Seek to increase minority participation in city procurement, hiring, and contracting. That's, Bill?
Yeah, that's one I'd like to try to expand a little bit. I think that's important. It's probably going to be a lot of work with a couple of city departments to try to figure out the legal angle. I'd like to expand it to say, work toward equity and unemployment rates for African-Americans or employment rates, more generally, citywide. If you look at the statistics, year after year, the unemployment rate for African-Americans is about double what it is for Caucasians. And if you look at the number of, in the labor force, it's about 4,000 African-Americans in Urbana. So if you reduce that unemployment rate by 1%, then that's 40 more people working, and that would have an impact of, I don't know, $30,000 a year for each person, 1.2 million a year. So I think we could work toward that goal. Right now, it's about 10%, I think, for African-American men, maybe 7% for African-American women. And I think working toward a goal of reducing that by 1% is pretty doable over the next few years, and it would involve a lot more pieces that we could work on individually and together.
So rephrase your two, number two there.
I was thinking, work toward, I guess, equity and employment rates for African-Americans. And we talked about working toward equity in traffic stops. It's kind of the same idea, probably a longer way to go. And that would also pretty much cover the one farther down about promote past employment for at-risk youth, although that's not all of it. And then would even kind of touch on what Eric was concerned about with housing discrimination, because I'm sure that a lot of the differences in employment rates is discriminatory or biased.
Okay, Jared.
So my immediate thought, Bill, was on what staff would have to say about the city's ability to affect that, just because we can't make employers hire people any more focused than the city can. I think the city, what the city can do certainly is achievable and within our control. I just don't know if outside economics are, you know, beyond what the city can commit financial resources to making happen. I don't know if city staff can comment on that, or if council also have thoughts.
I'd just say we have a human relations commission, we have ordinance in place that outlaws basically discrimination based on race. And so I think there are workforce development issues, that might be part of it, some of it's discrimination, some of it's more employment opportunities or better, you know, better advertising of positions, getting to the right people, having employment fairs. I think there's things we can do to get, you know, 40 people a year employed. I think that's kind of a reasonable goal. Yeah, I guess replace that, I mean, that would be part of it, the minority participation in city procurement would help. So I don't know, that would be kind of a, that's what I was thinking.
So you're recommending, having it be a city, an internal city focus with the participation in city procurement, hiring, and contracting, as well as working toward equity and increased employment rates for African-Americans? And that might be the job fair, I mean, that type of a focus?
Yeah.
As you spoke about, the human relations commission, I'm trying to see if that's what I'm hearing.
Well, I'm not sure what you mean by internal focus. I mean, I think a lot of it involves council participation and council kind of community work in order to make it work, so.
Maybe I'm missing it, but I saw the second, number two, as seek to increase minority participation in city procurement, hiring, and contracting as focus on the City of Urbana employment and contracting and that sort of.
Right.
So I'm calling that the internal focus within the city works.
Right, okay.
And then the external would be the human relations commission, job fair.
And council community kind of activity and.
Community activity.
There's this whole effort to increase apprenticeships in various careers, mostly union-based careers. And there's very few Urbana contractors listed in there, so that's one thing, you know, we could encourage Urbana contractors to participate in the apprenticeship programs and do what we can toward that. And that would actually play into helping to make it easier to have minority participation in city procurement if you had more minorities involved in the contracting and industrial businesses.
Eric?
There are several items that are probably similarly motivated that are aiming at economic and racial justice, or eliminating economic and racial injustice. And I wonder, our human relations commission, for the most part, functions in a reactive mode, but I wonder if we should charge the human relations commission with looking at these suggestions that various council members have made in this area and consider what, which of these would be the most feasible and the most useful and helpful towards the larger goal of racial and economic justice?
Thoughts? Jared?
So I guess it's just, it's the lack, just the lack of clarity, Bill, that I have the issue with. I mean, I think that it's obviously a good goal, obviously a worthwhile goal, obviously one that we all agree with and want to support. It's just, how does that translate into what the city focuses staff time and dollars on? You know, what, can we realistically expect to affect change by focusing outside of the city versus inside of the city?
Well, that's kind of what we're doing with the Climate Action Plan, so I don't really see it any different than that.
Eric?
Yeah, and I think Bill talked about, for example, having contractors participate in the job fair. They would sure participate in the job fair if they got points towards getting contracts from Urbana by participating to the job fair, as an example of something that we can do.
So I haven't heard from Mary Alice, Erin, or Diane. I don't know that, I don't think I've heard, we've heard from Dennis either, on this topic, no.
I, my opinion is, is it, and I go back to the business thing, I definitely think that having something that we talk about, race and employment equity is a broader category that has different ways of implementing it. And I think that that is a little bit of what Jared is talking about, is how do we, what actions can we take in order to see that? And what do we have the ability to do? And I think absolutely we have the ability to look at our procurement rules and how we incentivize different businesses, but I also think that we can come up with strategies. And I like Eric's suggestion in terms of charging the human relations group committee to say, what action items can we do within the community? And maybe we can't fulfill all of those right now, but certainly we can start that process. So I kind of see the economic development as saying, okay, I'm sorry, racial equity in terms of saying, we can do this right now. We want to work towards a larger goal, which is in the entire community, and one step towards that is charging the human relations. That's what I see.
Erin?
And I also think that as we set goals, and I do understand the difference between setting a goal and then setting something that is more implementation, right? I get the difference. As advocates, one of the things that I have often pushed for the city of Urbana is for us to be on the front lines of, even if it's just advocating for. So as we talk about relationships with the university, or Carl, or any of these other large employers, if the mayor or if any other representative from the city is saying, listen, this is extremely important to us as we work on these partnerships, we want to see what Carl's numbers look like, and we want to see what the university's numbers look like, or any of these other major employers, and look into their employment roles and see what sort of minority participation and what sort of ways that we could help facilitate those conversations. So I know it's not necessarily something that's tangible for us, but I think it's more tangible than we realize when we advocate for things and they see us pushing it. We may educate other people about it and we may see some change there as well. So I like the focus being on the internal stuff that we actually have control over, hiring in different departments and things like that, but also working with other entities. So I think we have more of an impact than people realize. We were at the UCAP meeting just the other day and the Park District was talking about some 200 seasonal jobs that they have and hiring outreach person for, in the community so that we can reach out into the community, get more diversity in those hires. So just advocacy is also something that's a part of the goals.
Okay. Eric, excuse me, Dennis or Diane? Then I'll get to you, Jared, okay?
Yeah, okay, I would support Erin Ammons and his thoughts, I think that's well spoken.
Okay, thanks. Diane, and then I'll, go ahead.
I would just like to know what the wording of number two will be.
Well, we're going to get there.
Okay.
So that was what I was going to offer.
Okay.
So I think maybe the biggest problem that I have with that is the first two words of work toward, and maybe we can change that to say, develop a system to incentivize and advocate for. Incentivize and advocate for equity and employment rates. Let me get rid of the second incentivized. Or increased, equity, okay, that's increased, I'm sorry. For equity and increased employment rates for African-Americans. And then maybe put below that with a goal of a 1% increase in African-American employment rates over the next three years.
Is this in addition to the internal work on procurement, hiring, and contracting?
I think it's.
Or instead of?
It's not, it's not instead of, I think that the internal part is inherent in this development.
So I would want to make sure that I'm crystal clear about this point, and I think Jared is trying to build on it, but the language of participation, minority participation in city procurement, hiring, and contracting is actually, my intention was to advocate for actual percentages, to actually make that language even stronger. So for me, it would be minority participation, 20% minority participation, for instance, in city procurement, hiring, and contracting. I think our goals should be, they don't have to be unreasonable, but I think they should be lofty. So while I like the practicality of 1% increase in what that means, or what Bill talked about, 1% is not a goal to me, that is, that's, we need something higher than that, right? Over a three-year period of time. So I would say, even if it was 1% per year, and that's still just, I'm just trying to be realistic as I possibly can, I would say the goal would have to be somewhere around 3% to 5% increase of African-American employment rates over the three-year span, but I still would want the 20% participation in city procurement, hiring, and contracting. So I know we can work on that, but that's, I want that type of specificity in relationship to contracting and employment and procurement opportunities.
Response? Mary Alice?
Since we're specifying African-American unemployment, my curiosity is with the 20% minority, is that only for African-American or for, so that includes women?
Yes, but we would, and thank you for bringing that up, I think that's would take us into a further conversation of split goals, right? So that there would be a particular percentage for African-Americans, Latinos, women, right? It would not be a, just one particular ethnic group within that group of minority. So I don't want to get too far into the weeds, but I wanted to at least state that.
What you've done is, this is the priority, and now you're defining what that priority means. I mean, and then if you define further, I mean, if you're going to split women out of African-American, that's another, that's another split. And you're kind of getting, now you're getting into further, you know, the weeds a little bit, if you will. But is this acceptable, is Jared's amendment to the second priority acceptable to the council?
My amendment to Bill's amendment.
Oh, Bill's amendment, I'm sorry.
I guess, I mean, I'm thinking about, say, workforce development programs, they're trying to get Parkland to do something in East Urbana, have, you know, a learning lab, and we've worked with other, with the new store down there that has the really nice cooperative, really nice learning spaces. And I don't know if that fits into that description, so it does, it's not really incentivizing and advocating, it's more workforce development, which.
It's all about salt and light.
Yeah, salt and light. So does that fit into your description of your amendment to my amendment?
I wouldn't disagree with that, no. I would agree it fits in.
And based on Mary Alice's comment, I put minority employment rates as opposed to what we have, what was recommended, just recognizing that.
I mean, I've looked at the figures, Asians is actually better than Caucasians and women are doing better than men in general, but.[1295.25][1295.25](Laughter).
That's the weeds, that's the weeds. We'll just leave it as minority and we'll, is that acceptable as a revision to the council for the second priority? Okay, terrific. I'm going to look at the third, work toward equity and traffic stops.
Erica I think had one last comment.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Eric, I'm sorry.
I, I mean, we have not mentioned, for example, Hispanics as among minorities, but really there is some systematic disadvantage in both housing and employment. And so I think Hispanics should be included with African-Americans. Now, women are doing well in employment, I don't think they're doing so well in procurement and contracting. I guess I'd like to not have, I mean, I guess we want to improve, but I would not like to set particular numerical, you know, goals at this point until we really have some staff input as to what is feasible.
I don't want to lose these comments, but I also think the priority is the top bit above the line, okay? Is that okay with folks?
I'm fine with that as long as the language is still speaking to procurement, hiring, and contracting. I'm not comfortable with just being increasing employment rates.
Sure. Okay. And what I was asking Charlie is if you were getting these comments down, because I am not, I can get, oh, oh, thank you, okay.
Could we just add that on to the goal, say, in part by, in part by increasing minority participation in city procurement, hiring, and contracting? Yep.
I think I'll be able to write that. Okay, thanks for the reminder. Good, then we're going to go to three.
I think so. I just had, I want, before you, well, I guess you can turn the page, but I just want to make sure that the, we don't lose the focus that.
I think you just lost.
No, go ahead.
If you make the change Bill just suggested, the first clause becomes work toward equity and increased employment rates for African-American through increasing minority participation in procurement, hiring, and contracting, but then you lose the other minority participation if you do it that way. So we just have to make sure we phrase it right.
Right, yeah, I think, I think I have a, I have an idea for that one, but I'll run it by you all after.
And so, and just for the sake of the spirit of the discussion, this conversation about contracting and hiring procurements and stuff like that has been the ongoing conversation and has been the primary focus of the conversation for minority participation goals. I do not want that to get watered down in saying that, okay, we hired 40 African-Americans, Latinos, women at Farming Fleet and Burger King and at Texas Roadhouse, that that satisfies the objective. That is not what I'm trying to get at. I want participation in procurement and contracting and those types of things, as well as the broader initiative. So I just want to make sure that everybody's on the same page with that.
Any disagreement with that? Okay, that helps me, thank you. Third priority, work toward equity and traffic stops, and add a golden corral, but let's focus on, let's focus on equity and traffic stops. Any argument about that being a priority? Go ahead.
I think that, I don't know, see, where's the number here? Number 19 kind of goes nicely with 18. I mean, it's certainly broader, the fines, and there's more than just traffic stops, but I think that is one part of the goal of working towards equity is to reduce the economic, disparate economic impact.
Any disagreement?
I think those are good to tie together, yeah.
Okay.
I think if we also incorporate number 28, a multi-use path along the boneyard, that might stop some traffic stops.[1596.75][1596.75](Laughter).
All right, well, one of the things, one of the things, I'm going to jump to, we now have three priorities. The next one on the list is, you talked about the trail, that is the next one. Seventeen, right? Expand connectivity of rail trail. Are these three sufficient? Are you, are you comfortable adding a fourth?
Diane?
Dennis?
Well, okay, you're right, you're right, you know, all right, so one of the ways that we mobilize the community to become vital and active, interesting in the downtown and to bring people to the downtown to encourage shopping and increase retail sales and all that is to move them there in an efficient manner through these creative and unique pathways. And I, so I think, yeah, you know, I would say number four is a doable focus. Whether we'll build the trail, we don't know, but at least we can commit to it and perhaps achieve initial investment, if not in the community, maybe, you know, in some practical way of planning. And that connects with two or three of the other trail-oriented connectivity items on the list, which I have to look for numerically.
Okay, Bill?
I do agree that this one is worthy of a goal. I think it's something that, it's been in our pedestrian bicycle plan for, since before I started in council, and it also has a lot of development potential between the medical school and the available properties along the south side there, even on the north side a couple. So I do think it, I do think it deserves it.
So if we have room for four, that's a question I'm going to ask after this, but this, is there agreement that this would be, again, to me, this adds to the diversity of your priorities in a nice way, somewhat, you were saying, it's connecting some of them, but also is different than what you've selected in your other three. So as you consider the next two to three years, I'm going to say the next three years, are these four priorities something that you feel would be accomplishable on top of the other elements that you need to focus on within the city?
Hey, I'm going to say yes, because I'm an optimist.
I think we're already putting resources towards some of them, so.
Okay.
Yeah, absolutely.
I haven't heard, I haven't heard a resounding, I haven't heard a no from anybody. And that's what I'm listening for right now. And we've got about five more minutes, I think.
So the rail to trail sounds like Urbana's version of the High Line in New York, if any of you have been there. And that would be so great.
I'm going to say rival the High Line.
Rival, rival the High Line, right. Rival the High Line, right.
Okay. Now, we have four, we have four priorities then, right? As you think about it, these, I mean, these four are pretty significant in my mind when I'm thinking about everything else that you need to accomplish as a municipality. So I'm not, I'm not asking you to select a fifth. I'm even suggesting that maybe you catch your breath and hold it at four, but if someone says, boy, it's just egregious, there's something here that just absolutely should be here that isn't, then I'm going to let you discuss that amongst yourselves for about two minutes and then we'll wrap it up. So anything egregious, that's, any egregious omissions? Not just, it'd be nice to have, oh, Mary Alice.
I'd like to advocate for the fifth one because, which is invest in repurpose older housing stock, that one is mine. That was my number one goal. I think that we certainly see a lot of building going on, both in Champaign and Urbana, and without a focus on our existing housing stock. We are going to deteriorate as a community. That's my opinion, and so that's why I'd like to advocate for that one. I think it's very different from all the other things that we're talking about here.
Okay. So Mary Alice is making an argument to have your number five on your list be priority five, so as not to be confusing, but, yes, Eric.
So I'm going to share something with you that I already presented to the Sustainability Commission, and they, I don't know what they're going to do with it, but I'll share it with you also. And this is a sustainability tax, if Champaign would join in and so we remained on an equal basis with them. And this would be not only reduce our carbon, our community's carbon footprint, but would enhance economic justice and racial justice because the tax would be used to improve weatherization or gas-to-electric conversion in homes in low-income neighborhoods, which is partly, you know, which sort of links it with this priority. So at some point, I hope, Sustainability Commission will come to you and, you know, with this idea in some form. And I think it could be linked to a couple of different things that we've already been talking about.
Okay. So he's, it sounds like he's kind of seconding what you're saying.
Yeah, I'm sort of seconding, but elaborately got it, yeah.
Okay. So any other thoughts, some, that you might have as to number five being priority five? Any concerns? Let me ask it that way, any concerns, oh, go ahead, Eric.
I was going to say, plus, this will require contractors, which can be especially, an area where we'd especially focus on women and minority contractors.
Okay. Anybody opposed to this being the number five priority, rather than speaking in support of?
I'd just like to say, I would just like to say that I was thrilled that Mary Alice put that on the list and she valued it so highly, because I value it a lot, but I didn't think it would get that much buy-in. Of course, I'm thinking somewhat of historic preservation, but, you know, without the, without the older housing stock, our city could just look like any place in the world where, you know, where vinyl siding has been the construction mode for the last, you know, 45 years. So, and then Eric enriched it by adding sustainability. So I think, I think it becomes more worthy, and I'm happy to keep it as number five.
Erin.
And I'm happy to take one of my proposals that only got one point and add it to it as well.
So here's what we have. We have five priorities. We will get those out to you this week for you to affirm, and probably at the next meeting or committee meeting or something like that. Diane and I have not talked about next steps for you all. I'm, my job is finished, but we're, I mean, Charlie, I'll help with the, making sure that we're in sync with what these top five priorities are. I think you're biting off a lot. That's just my only caution for you, is you've got a lot on your plate. When the mayor mentioned budget cuts and that sort of thing, that's going to take a lot of energy, as you know. It's not like, how do we increase our budget? It's very different. So anyway, any final observations that you might have? I think the next, for me, the next step is to get you these five priorities, okay? And I do think, as Mary Alice said, this adds to sort of the diversity of your priorities covering various areas within the city. Okay. If there's nothing else, then you're done three minutes early, according to that clock.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for this process.
Terrific. Take a break.
Oh, with no further business before this special city council meeting, this meeting is adjourned.